All right, we will call committee of the whole to order. We have all members of the committee here except I will move to excuse Vice President Schachner for the very excellent reason that he has welcomed a new member to their family. So I'll move to excuse Councilmember Schachner.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Okay, so we have just a couple of things on the agenda. I'm going to actually defer the conversation about Resolution 2023-68. We're having some other conversations around that and I kind of want to have those before we delve into that. So with no further ado, we will welcome our excellent members of the Lakewood Fire Department. So Chief is, who's heading this off? I see we have Assistant Fire Chief Sambula, our Neighborhood Paramedic Ryan Berth, and our Fire Marshal Ryan Fairbanks. So how are we starting here tonight, Chief?
Well, I think we'll go right down the list. I'll start with Assistant Chief Sambula that will kind of give an overview and introduce the Neighborhood Paramedic himself, Ryan Berth, which most of you know. And I'm looking forward to his presentation as well. I know there's been a lot of hard work put into this and I'm very excited to see what he has to say.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, take it away Assistant Chief.
Ryan, I did what you did. Double tapped it. Thank you, Members of Council, for having us tonight. I also want to thank Kate Ingersoll from Healthy Lakewood Foundation and Colleen Mackey from Data Shine. She couldn't be here tonight, but they were integral in the rollout and then also the look back of the Neighborhood Paramedic Pilot Program. We started doing a look back around summertime of last year and we really wanted to, I apologize, I am on duty, so I may have to jump out of here, but we did a look back and we wanted to learn whatever we can find out from what we, our interactions with all of the patients that we saw. And we consulted and hired Data Shine, which was also funded through the Healthy Lakewood Foundation to put out surveys and to really dig deep into their interactions and what their feedback was on how the program could improve. So we'll go through the list. I'm going to kind of go through some of the background data on the fall prevention, which is what we started with the pilot program. And the reason we chose falls was because there's just so much, and you'll see later with Neighborhood Paramedic Berth's present, part of the presentation, that he has the ability to expand this greatly. So we wanted to, in the pilot program, narrow it down into a way that we could get a grasp on what this can have a true effect on the residents in our target population, but also something that got us into the home that could branch out to other social issues, other medical issues, and how we can address those. So falls was what we chose. And as you can see, there's, you know, 38,000-plus fall-related deaths and more than 100 deaths per day nationwide from falls. And there's over $50 billion in medical costs associated with falls per year. So you can go to the next slide there, Ryan. I'm going to kind of move through these slides quickly because the data of what we found out is not as important as where we're going with the program. Speaking to Lakewood specifically, almost 10,000 Lakewood residents are 60 years or older, and 48% of those live alone. So I apologize, I can't see as well, so I'm using my phone to also look at this. But 43% of the older residents are renters. And the reason that's important is because we found that most renters live by themselves and their socioeconomic status is a little bit less fortunate than homeowners. So that has a direct correlation to their access to care and their ability to reach out for resources and for help. So we chose that population for that reason.
Excuse me, is that addressing, categorizing older adults, older residents as 60-plus then?
Yes, yes. So that was the target demographic that we went for was Lakewood residents 60 years old or older that had a fall in their home. So typically, there were three ways that would trigger a visit from the Neighborhood Paramedic. Majority of those was post-911 calls. So the crews would go out for a fall and then they would notify through their reporting software, the Neighborhood Paramedic, that, hey, we went on a fall. It was Mrs. Smith. This was the address. And they would like a follow-up. The other ways that we could do it was if someone inquired through the mayor's office, through, somewhere through Human Services, and then Human Services directly through, like Lakewood Alive or somewhere other partners, community stakeholders. Go to the next slide, Ryan, please. So the, when we studied fall prevention, the CDC has a fall prevention program or fall prevention guidelines. It's a steady, it's called the Steady Program. And we found out that fall prevention is effective. And not only that, is if you put money into fall prevention, on the back end, it saves money in healthcare costs. So you can go to the next slide, Ryan. So when we look back at the evaluation, our pilot year was from day one of the start of the program all the way through. So we would have loved to have richer numbers as far as the number of people we actually interacted with, but I think what was important that came from that is we learned a lot even from the numbers that we had. And as you'll see with Ryan's part of the presentation, it's given us enough information to expand where we can take this program. So 46 households were visited and we had, 40 of those were post-falls. The other remaining visits were from people that reached out because either a family member saw something for the Neighborhood Paramedic or the patient themselves actually had a concern of falling or wanted a safety inspection of their home. So we reached out to 46 clients. 65% of them were female. Most, they averaged the age of 75, and nearly three out of four of them lived alone. And 72% of them rented their home. So it correlated exactly with the statistics that we found for not only Nationwide but City of Lakewood specifically. You can go to the next one. So in addition to the visits that we had, we used Data Shine to crunch the data that we had, but they also put out surveys to the people that we reached out to, key stakeholders, for what their interactions were and how they would like to see the program improved. So some of the areas of strength that we had was they said that it was very effective for us that we were able to reach vulnerable residents. There was positive integration into EMS crew workflow. So we really had good follow-up when EMS crew would tell the patient that they were going to follow up with the Neighborhood Paramedic or the Neighborhood Paramedic was going to follow up. Usually within, in the pilot year, within three days of discharging from the hospital, they receive some type of interaction from the Neighborhood Paramedic. I should state that we did have a different Neighborhood Paramedic at one point, and then Ryan has since taken over. And now Ryan also sometimes responds with the ambulance to the house. And before they're even transported to the hospital, they know that they're going to get a follow-up with Ryan, or Ryan will meet them at the hospital to interact with family members or patients so that they can start that care right away. And there, the other positive strength for us was that the community presence helps raise awareness. Some of our areas of growth was they wanted to see us widen our reach. They thought we were effective in the fall risk, fall prevention program, but they wanted to see us expand out into other areas. And they wanted to have us leverage our relationships. And they wanted us to build a better presence online. And we took all of those suggestions. And we'll get into Ryan's portion. You can go through these. Let's just reiterate some of the stuff. We took everything that they said and we will expand it over to Ryan's portion where he's going to tell you from October of 2023 till today where we've gone with this. And I say October because that's when the look back was completed. And if you remember, we came in in October to present this. The silver lining of us not presenting it till now was that we can show you what we've implemented with these, with this feedback since then. So I will turn it over to Ryan Berth.
Thank you, Chief. No. Thank you, Council. Thank you, guys, for having me today. Thank you, Kate. Again, as Chief Sambula said, we've been, had a really good go at this the last few months, taking a lot of the data that we received and trying to figure out the best ways to start to implement it and come up with a really good plan so we can reach out to our residents and find opportunities to help them every day in their homes, connect them to different resources, and show them what the Lakewood Fire Department is here to do for them. Next slide, please. So one of the first things that I did when I came in, given the recommendations, was have more of a social media presence. Excuse me. So we started a Facebook page and an Instagram page. We seem to be getting a lot of following on there, some good engagement. I know you see quite a few of my posts often, so I appreciate your support on that. As you can see up there, Facebook is Lakewood Neighborhood Paramedic. Instagram is LFD underscore Neighborhood underscore Medic. If anybody wants to follow, please do. That's my little plug. But it was important for us to start to expand our reach in other areas that we don't often have an ability to communicate. And what we found, which I was very impressed with, was our senior population has a huge social media following and they really get a lot of information through there. So I was quite surprised when I learned that, that this is a great opportunity for us to share a lot of information that we have at the Fire Department, not just through our program, but working with the marshal. We want to make sure people are as safe as they can be at all times. So we thought it was important. So we get very good community engagement and community education through there. We also like to use it to promote some of our community events. As you know, Lakewood is amazing with the different festivals and fairs that they put on, and we want to be a part of all of those. So we want to make sure that we're sharing, that we're going to be at these events and people can stop by, they can talk to us, they can learn more about our program and how it fits into their lives every day. We also like the feedback from the community. When we get online, we're able to have good discussions. A lot of times people might message me on the side so we can share information that way. Sometimes email for them is a little bit too much and going back and forth. Social media just seems to be the easy way to communicate now. So it's been a great opportunity for me to connect with people through that way, as well as building relationships. As we start to expand and we grow, we start to follow other organizations as they start to follow us. And then we start to work together and we find other ways that we can help assist or collaborate with different events that they have going on and how our partnership can work together. Because at the end of the day, I think all the organizations within our community want to see people thriving and being successful within the community. So these are just some different ways that we're able to start to do that. One of the biggest things that we tackled was improving our documentation process. We went from using paper forms. It was really just a two-page assessment form that seemed to be lacking some information. So I sat down with the folks from Human Services, Chad, Laura, and we really sat down and tried to come up with a really good intake form. I know that they use at the community center intake forms to gather information. And it was seeming that during my process, when I would want to refer someone to them, they would ask me a number of questions that it was like, oh, no, I didn't get that information. So how can I do better? So we sat down and we came up with a really good overview of what they need, what I need, and as well as organizations like Lakewood Alive, who we partner a lot with, to say, hey, what is it you guys are looking for? What information do you need? And what's important so we can start connecting people to resources right away? So we took some time to do that and we came up with a digitized form. And this is really our landing page. JP Terranova, our IT mechanic at the Fire Department, I can't say enough about him. First off, he's done an amazing job and been super supportive through this whole process. I've probably been more a thorn in his side on some of it, but it's important for us, from a program standpoint, to really be able to get the information we need and have it put in a place that's useful. So it takes you to this landing page and we have an assessment form. And as you can see on the left side there, these are just some of the information, some of the information that we get. Demographics, emergency contacts. The questionnaire is really more along the lines of some of the basic questions that Human Services would ask. Insurances, primary care doctors, what are your income levels? Because that helps them determine what programs you qualify for. Then we talk about the social determinants of health. And then really, it kind of turns into a, more of a report that we would fill out on an ambulance. We have past medical history, allergies, diagnosis, things like that, that would really pertain to the health side of things. And then we do, we also do a home safety check. And we break that down based on every room in the home, including stairs, outside, basement, attic, bedrooms, kitchen. And in each of those categories, we look for specific items that would determine whether it's safe or not. And then we would either help them remedy those, find ways to improve their situation, or if it was serious enough, we would bring in other agencies. The referral system was something that was important for me to get going because making phone calls, sending emails, it was, seemed like there would be a lot of lag in time between trying to get in touch with people that needed help and referring them to the appropriate agency. So for example, if you, you can go to the next slide. Might be hard to see, but in the, in the process itself, there's a page for referrals. And we would just highlight one of these. And then based on the need, it would be when we complete it and submit it, it would automatically send to the necessary agency. So if someone needed Human Services assistance or needed a social worker, we would click on whichever one of those it would be. And when we complete the form, it would populate whatever information that they needed based on what they've told us. And it would populate it and it would send it right to their email. So the referral happens almost instantly. As we work through this and we conduct more health assessments, assessments which you'll see here briefly that have to do with mobility and strength, we're able to complete these assessments and send them right over to their doctors in real time while we're doing this. If we notice that there are deficiencies, we can contact the doctor and say, hey, we want to let you know we're here with Mrs. Smith today. We've completed these assessments. She's showing that she falls into a high-risk category. Can we either A, get an appointment so she can come in and see you, or B, if you're within 90 days of seeing your primary care provider, a lot of times, they'll order therapy for you right then. So we can start that process almost instantly with this, with the way we have this set up now. So this was one of the things that we've been working on over the last month to six weeks to really figure out what information we need and how do we get it to the appropriate organizations or agencies. So other referrals would be bedbug referrals, hoarding situations, meals, people that need meals. So these are some of the main referral systems that we would be sending people to throughout our process. Grants. Over the last couple of months, I have applied for a number of grants and we recently received one from the Lakewood Rocky River Rotary Club for $1,250. I also am in the process of sending a grant into AARP for up to $20,000. And by 2/29, we should hear from the Older Adult Falls Prevention Coalition on a grant we submitted for $4,000. So the funding for the program's very important because it helps us provide our residents that have needs such as grab bars, shower head on a hose, maybe shower chairs that if they don't qualify for these certain programs or these certain items, then we want to help find ways that we can supplement that as needed. That's it on the grants? So that was really what took place from the time I started in October through the end of the year. After sitting down and talking with Chief Sambula, Kate, and Colleen from Data Shine, and really wanted to come up with a great direction moving forward, we wanted, number one, we wanted to find an opportunity to continue helping people, having an understanding that we're growing this program rapidly. I've started to realize during that time that my ability to be in one place, or more than one place at one time, is very difficult. So we had the great opportunity to add three assistant Neighborhood paramedics, one from each shift. That's a huge benefit to not just the program, but to our EMS crews when they're out there every day because these individuals know what they're looking for. They can educate the other crew members and they can also educate the residents when they're out there, talking with them about our program. So they're big advocates. Additionally, they're able to support me in some of the events that we do, such as blood pressure and blood glucose clinics. We do about eight to 10 of those a month throughout the community, whether it be the Community Center, the Westerly Buildings, Fedor Manor, the YMCA. As of late, we're going to be doing that on Wednesday. So we're starting to pick up traction with that and a lot of people are interested. So it was important for us to find an opportunity to get them out there and start to talk with these people, begin building trust and working within the community. We also want to continue building on those community events that we participate in. We're building partnerships with the YMCA, LeAnn Patterson over there. She's been a great supporter of the program. They don't have any senior activities coordinators, so they're kind of behind the eight ball. And talking with her, a lot of their senior population's disappointed that they don't have as many services through the Y. So we thought it'd be a great opportunity for us to come in, provide some of those little services, and then start to build on that. Maybe lunch and learn, some seminars, maybe bring in other professionals from the healthcare field to start giving them information that would pertain to them specifically. And then what that does is really opens up the doors for conversation for us to say, hey, Mrs. Smith, you know, you're asking a lot of questions about diabetes. Why don't we sit down together one day? We can take a deeper dive into it and find out how we can help you find, you know, what it is that you're looking for. Another big program that has really kind of caught me off guard with the number of people inquiring about it, but Knox Box Program for seniors. I'm not sure if any of you are familiar with what a Knox Box is, but it's a key box that the Fire Department uses to put keys for the building in, and only we have the locks for it. They're the big brown boxes on a lot of the commercial buildings. The one on this picture here is a residential Knox Box. This goes on the home and we put the homeowner's key in it. And this is great for us and for them because it really streamlines the process. If someone were to fall, or someone were hurt, or even worse yet, someone was trying to get a hold of their dad in the house and they couldn't get a hold of them. When we get there, sometimes it's a little bit of a process to figure out the right and the best and safest way for us to gain entry into the home. Now, in an emergency that would dictate it, we would find any way and just, if we had to break a door, we'd break a door. But in an instance where someone may not be as injured, but they just can't get up, we don't want to go breaking down a door, breaking down a window. We don't want to have to waste time calling the truck down to help us bring ladders and all of that. So we really want to stress the importance to these individuals that a Knox Box would be beneficial because now when our EMS crews arrive, they already know, based on our system, when we update it, that this person has a Knox Box key. We walk up and we're in, and it just worked the other day. The crew had no issues. They were very appreciative of, one, that it was available to them. And the patient was very happy that the process was quick, easy, and didn't cost them anything additional. The unfortunate side of the Knox Box is they're not cheap. They're about $210 apiece. So it makes it difficult for some of these families or these individuals that are already struggling to make this purchase. So working with the Fire Marshal, we're trying to come up with an appropriate program that would potentially categorize these people based on income levels and how much they would pay or anything, if at all. So when it comes to the Knox Box Program, that's kind of where we're at on that, but we still explain to people the importance of them. And people are always welcome to purchase them on their own, but we also understand that there's a large population that struggles to put food on the table at the end of the day. But we also don't want to create any unnecessary expenses if they were to fall and here we are coming in to break a door, break a window. So we try not to do that, obviously, but this is a solution to all those problems. We want to continue broadening our marketing for community CPR. We've had an unbelievable response since May 12th, when we did our first class. We've certified over 200 community members in CPR. We've done them from a class at one of the Methodist Church to the Winton Place, to dentist's office, to, we just signed up 25 members of the PTA, followed by the next 75 they'd like to do. So we definitely are making an impact. And as you can see, I just put right there on the side the importance of community CPR. And as you can see, if performed immediately, CPR can double or triple the chance of surviving an out-of-hospital cardiac arrest. So right there, it tells you how important it is to have people in the community ready to act. And we see that quite often within our city. A lot of passer-bys, a lot of people around everywhere, so someone always has their eye out for people. We also want to start working more with the Rec Department. I've spoke with Leslie Favor-Kroegman about this. We want to start taking opportunities to educate and certify our coaches and our volunteers that are coming in every season because a lot of times, they're new to the program. It's parent volunteers. So we want to make sure that these individuals are ready to respond in the situations where we're going to see this likely happen the most. And that's on our athletic fields, on the football field, the baseball field. And in conjunction with that, we want to continue adding AEDs throughout the community in our public spaces so people are prepared to obtain those and help because the only answer to cardiac arrest is early CPR and early defibrillation. So we find that very important. One of the other pieces that we were wanting to look into is expanding our car seat program. Right now, we get a lot of great response from our car seat program. Folks come out, come to our professionals, make sure that they get their car seats installed properly and come away with some education. But we thought that we might have been missing some things with young families who are about to have children or already have children. And we wanted to find a way to incentivize them to get certified in CPR, as well as take the time to ensure that their home is safe when they're bringing their new child home. So it's really a three-part, car seat installation, CPR and first aid, and in-home safety inspection. And if they were to complete all three of these requirements, we would like to be able to provide them with an incentive that would make them even more safe in their home. So things like a smoke detector, carbon monoxide, fire extinguisher, first aid kits, flashlights, reusable bag that we could deliver this to them when they bring their child home, as well as a little baby blanket we thought would be nice with the Lakewood Fire Department and the Neighborhood Paramedic logo on it. So these are some of the ideas that we had for expanding our programs even further. And we've had a lot of great reaction from people when we talk about it. As I said, we want to continue our, expanding our presence at our community events. I know I've seen some of you out there throughout this past year, but this was our tent at Light Up Lakewood. We had a great time. A couple of our other members came out and supported us and gave me a hand with setting up down there. We did a safety fair at Kirtland House. So we've had members from not just the program, the Police Department, Human Services, Red Cross came out. And really, we just set up a panel. We each give a presentation to, in this case, it was the Kirtland House. And then we have question and answers after so people can understand how they can be safe, not just in their homes, but these are unique situations that they live in condos or apartments. And a lot of times, the way we do things in an apartment or a condo may be different from your home. So it's nice to take the time to sit down and talk to them specifically about their lives and in their situation. So our idea is, we would like to start, and we've already had conversation with some folks on this, is starting in the Gold Coast and working our way down through each one of those high-rises and providing information and education to all those individuals, given the number of residents we have down in that area. And then our food drive, we continue to become more and more involved in the food drive. This was our second year working with LCAC and their food drive. We were able to help collect donations. We bagged up the food. And some of us had the opportunity to go out and deliver the meals firsthand to see these families and what they're faced with and have conversations with them. And it was nothing but a pleasure for me to see that and just shows me how much more we can do for our community members. One of the big events that I have my eyes on for this year is Active Aging Week. Active Aging Week is the first week in October. And it's a seven-day event that focuses on, you can see there on the right side, it focuses on seven aspects of wellness. My plans behind this are to start talking with community members who may have expertise or knowledge in each of these areas and start to build a curriculum that would involve an education piece and an activity in the afternoon for each of those days. Seven days is quite a task, but if I can pull off three, four, five, it doesn't matter to me. If we can just provide some education and some activities for our seniors to feel that they're engaged in the community and come away with some positive education and material, then that's a win for us. a win for us. Became a member of the Community Health Action Team, which has been focused on providing access to physical and behavioral health care. This was a result from the Community Health Needs Assessment, so I was asked to be a part of that. We just had our first meeting last week. It was great. We have a lot of amazing individuals within the community who are participating in that, so I'm really looking forward to expanding those horizons and broadening the scope of the program to start, you know, making an impact on individuals who are looking for care in that matter. I attended EMS Advisory Committee meeting with the Cleveland Clinic. That went really well. Was able to share the program with them and open up the doors to working with their social workers and expanding our program into the hospitals. And what that means for us is that when a patient from Lakewood were to go to the hospital, now that they understand we have a program, they're able to reach out to me, and we can start orchestrating what a discharge is going to look like. Because we were running into issues where people would go to the hospital, they would be discharged, and they would end up going right back into the environment that they were in that caused them to go in the first place. So we're trying to really close these gaps and bringing in the social workers from the hospital and the agencies from outside to say, how do we all work together to ensure that when someone comes home from the hospital, that they come home safely in an environment that is going to allow them to thrive independently and become more well than they are now? So that's a, probably the biggest hurdle that we have, is trying to get everybody on the same page to allow these individuals to make it back home safely. So as we continue to build the program, we're going to learn more and more about how we can assist those patients back home safely. We do the H2O program. The marshal and I are a part of that. I've been doing that for a couple of years now. And basically, what we've done now is opened up the presentation to not just fire safety and first aid from the fire department, but now I take some time to share the program, because who we're talking to are the people that need to know the program. While their children are being educated on how to be safe in their homes, we're able to share the different resources that the parents have available to them. And a lot of times, what we find is that these parents are not just taking care of their children, they're taking care of other individuals as well, which is completely overwhelming to them. So it's important for us to come in, kind of ease some of that stress and that tension, and say, let's just start connecting you with the people who can help. And that seems to take a lot of the stress away right there, just in that And I think that's all we have. Any questions or comments?
I think all you have is an understatement.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for that great presentation. I do have a few questions, but I'll turn to my colleagues first. Colleagues, any questions? Councilwoman Stubing?
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Nice to see you all again.
You too.
And thank you for giving us this thoughtful and caring program and presentation this evening. Assistant Chief Sambula, on your first couple of slides there, you had 10% of Lakewood housing is age-ready. Could you say a little bit more about what that is and what the metrics are to determine that?
Which slide was I in? I'm sorry.
I think it was the first or the second. It was right at the beginning. Might have been the next one.
Oh, okay. So I apologize that I breezed over that. I wanted to make sure we got to that. So specifically, the bullet points that are underneath that is exactly what they're considering in that aging-ready nationally. So they fit in the parameters of their, when their home was built, and then when their, I'm sorry. Yeah, so when their home was built, and then some of the barriers or the safety aspects to the home. So they lack zero step entrances, multifamily units, and affordable housing. So it's a tiny portion of all of those people that fit in that demographic that actually have what would be considered a safe home for them. So that's where the home safety inspection comes in, and then whether it's lighting, or grab rails, or figuring out better ways to enter and exit the home, those are the things that, recommendations that are made through the home safety inspection. And unfortunately, due to time, like, we were unable to get into the actual form that Ryan uses. It's all digitized, and it goes room by room, starting on the exterior. And you basically go from the top floor all the way to the bottom, to the basement, and it covers all of that. So it's very thorough, which is why we didn't include it in the presentation tonight, but Ryan is willing to share that with any of you individually to show you exactly what it's looking at for those inspections.
Thank you. I think that would be great, if you could share that with us, or possibly even put it on the website, so that everyone can see that, even as those of us that are taking care of parents, aging parents, could have a look at that and say, oh, yeah, we need to take care of that one thing or those couple of things there. Thank you.
So our hope is, within the next couple of weeks, we're going to be getting the car that I use. We're going to be getting decals put on that, which I'm really excited about, because now we're going to have an opportunity to really share the program just as you're driving from place to place. And along with that, we want to put a QR code on the car, so if someone wants, they can scan the QR code. And ideally, what we're going to try to do is create a landing page, and that landing page is going to take people to the Neighborhood Paramedic Resources. So you're going to be able to see these different assessments. You're going to see the things that we're talking about today. You're also going to have links to resources that may provide you additional information, based on maybe the disease that you have, whether it's diabetes, or fall risk, whatever it may be. We're hoping to create a landing page that will be able to take them there, as well as signing up for CPR, in-home safety assessments, or car seat program.
Excellent. Hopefully, they scan that, not while they're driving, though. Other questions? Councilwoman Rader?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you so much for everything you do. You know, when we sat here and we decided, and I think the mayor brought this program forward, and you guys developed it and brought it to us, you know, we thought it would be fantastic, but to hear, you know, this is just so multifaceted, such a huge benefit to the community. So thank you so much for the time and energy you put into this. Another astounding number, 200 folks that you've trained through the CPR program. That is amazing. Just since May of last year, is that correct? Wow. And I remember, we had worked on that a little bit before the pandemic. Pandemic kind of put a little bit of a pause on that, but it sounds like people are really into it. How can people, are there going to be additional rounds coming next year, where people can get trained? And how do they find that? How are they get access to that?
So that's another process that we're working on improving right now. The people who I've spoken with that have been interested in the CPR, I usually forward them along to Jesse Phan, who really handles a majority of that. So as far as the scheduling goes, I'm not exactly sure how they've been doing it, but I know they've been working on a process, so we can kind of work a little bit more together, so everything's cohesive.
Yeah, we do have an email address right now that they can, when the referral comes in, we give the email address. We ask for the information, whether they're, you know, a dental office, a, you know, church, a community group. What we would like to do with that is similar to what Ryan said with the QR code. You have a landing page, and if you need a car seat fit stop, if you need CPR, if you need resources from the Neighborhood Paramedic, all in one place. You click a button, and it's going to take you to what you need to do. Similarly, to the way the car seat fit stop works, we use a program. I received in the last two days, two submissions for requests to make appointments. They put their information in. It throws them on the schedule, but it also gives us the information, you know, how many people they're interested in training, what level of certification they need. Is it HeartSaver? Is it the healthcare provider? And it'll flow, much like the car seat fit stop does, which has kind of been the template, or like the test case for us to use it on. So, and that, because that is a regularly scheduled and a regular cadence event for us.
Great. Thank you. Sounds like we're on the leading edge. Thank you, Madam President.
Other colleagues? Yeah.
Thank you, Madam President. And I'd just like to say, this is, thank you for this presentation, all of you. Thank you, Kate, and Healthy Lakewood Foundation. I know that, like, when we think about kind of city services, a lot of times, it's reactive, right? The building department goes out, you call, there's some violation, police comes, there's an accident. And it's really hopeful to hear that we're trying to get to the root cause of issues and actually save us money, right? This is what this program is doing, is it's saving us money and addressing problems later than addressing them earlier. So all of this is, I think, you know, where we should be going as a government, and applaud all of your efforts. What I am curious about is, as we, the things you ticked off, Ryan, were incredible, but there was a lot of stuff there, right? So, and you have three assistants that are on each shift. Talk to me about, talk to us about where you see this program going capacity-wise? I mean, because you're one person and you have three assistants. You know, are there opportunities for more funding to have more? I mean, because I think problem identification is step one, and it seems like you've really gotten a lot of the easy wins, digitizing some forms, being really pragmatic, and having a good program in place. But then the next step is like where you can go from there, right, and how you can grow the program. And even from a data perspective, showing the amount you're saving the city, right? Because I think that makes a use case for it going forward. So I'm just curious, is where all of you see kind of this going, and what you see, your ability to kind of take on the additional capacity, whether it's in partnership with Healthy Lakewood or other organizations? I'm just curious if you could speak to that.
So we, right now, the way things are going, you're absolutely right. We're really starting to open up this program, and we're finding more and more opportunities. So leaning on a lot of the other organizations and stakeholders that we've partnered up with, mainly Lakewood Alive, that helps us come in and do a lot of those aging-in-place assessments. They have certified aging-in-place assessors. The city has two aging-in-place assessors as well. So really, what I'd like to see happen is, as we move forward, utilizing the three assistants in various ways, be it blood pressure clinics, or assisting with our in-home visits. The whole goal behind digitizing our assessment form and making it a lot more straightforward, yes and no's dropdown boxes, is almost to create, I don't want to say an easy way to do it, but something where someone can come in, and it's always the same. There's no, you know, nothing's left up for guess, so you have to fill it out a specific way. I think also with, we also created an update for our EMS Crew Referral System, which has made things a lot easier, where in real time, our crews can go out with a form. If they're going to sign off Mrs. Smith, they can let Mrs. Smith know that Ryan's going to follow up with you. He follows up on all these calls. He does these appointments. I've left Thursdays open for that. They give them a time slot. They fill it out and send it, and it goes right on my calendar. So now I'm able to, rather than spending my time chasing, or calling, or following up with these referrals, which can be difficult when you don't know where they're at. If they went to the hospital, when are they home? What's their schedule like? You knock on their door, they're not answering. Now we have a quick, simple, streamlined way, so I'm able to book those appointments effectively and efficiently. Secondly, we want to open up the doors to other demographics, because this is important, that the community sees it as a community-wide program, not just a program that serves one specific demographic. So as we start to open up those doors, we want to be able to utilize those assistants in whatever skills they possess best. So if they like to work with certain demographics more than others, or maybe they just thrive within those demographics, we want to see them working closer with those individuals as well. Now, to be realistic, where I see the program going is probably to a point that's going to need some real help, you know, as we continue to grow it. What that looks like over the course of the next year, two years, I'm not exactly sure, but I know that the processes that we've put in place today were for the purpose of really growing the program in the future. If we would have stayed where we were, we could have probably maintained what we were doing, but it really wouldn't have made as big of an impact as I would have liked to have seen. So I think just starting out where we're at, doing the CPR stuff, opening up the doors to the families, and really getting feedback from them to say, hey, what is it you guys are looking for from a city service like this, and how can we provide that? Really, until I get an idea of that, engaging what the community is looking for, other than fall prevention programs and things of that nature, it's hard to say specifically how that would look in the next couple of years.
I'd like to add to, Councilman Baker, and I think it's a really great question, but there is legislation at the state level that they're trying to allow for reimbursement from Medicare and Medicaid for services specific to community paramedic programs, which ours has named the Neighborhood Paramedic Program, but it's, falls under the category as community paramedic. So there's, it's a slow process, but we're very hopeful that that will get passed, because that will help reimburse some of the costs that we put out into the program. I think also that there has to be, you know, the realistic look at the fact that we may be spending money on the program now, but I think the overall burden on the healthcare system as a whole, reducing the repeat visits to residents for 911 services is going to save the city money in those reactive services that we provide. But I look forward to having the problem of having to decide how to make more Ryans, and how we're going to fund that. But partially, that's kind of why we wanted to get in front of council, so you understood the program greatly, so that in the future, if we need to come up with these ideas, we can collaborate with the city administration, with council, with some of the community stakeholders, and say, well, how do we, like, what's the next focus, and how do we expand this, and how can we do this, you know, so it's financially responsible, but yet a good service to the citizens?
And thank you. And I think that, I'm glad to hear that, because it's kind of where I was hoping this was going. Because I think, you know, as you build this case, and I would, you know, just thinking about it from just a pure council's role, right? We approve budgets. We approve big agreements. And I know, just by reading what you have put together, that you're saving the city money. But having that shown in a way that the public can consume really easily, I think helps build your case, and you get that kind of support. So, and I think it's even, you know, I don't want to get into these details, but I'm sure there's CBA issues with Neighborhood Paramedics versus, you know, everything in between. So being thoughtful about those things, both with the bargaining unit, as the administration, as we go forward, I think will be really helpful. And I'm just really excited about this program, really excited about the partnership, and excited to see where it goes. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Marks? Thanks for a great presentation. You guys do a great job. And I do know, as a senior myself, I want to stay in my house. So I, and I think a lot of seniors want to stay in their home. They love living in Lakewood, and they love having all the amenities Lakewood has to offer. But I do think a lot of seniors are fearful that if you come into their home, you're going to force them out of their home into a different living situation. So if there's some way we can educate seniors about what you're doing is, you're helping them stay in their home by making it a safer place to live, by just making simple suggestions. I think that's so very important, because so many seniors don't want to leave their home, but they don't want you to come in, because they're afraid you're going to say, you can't live here anymore. And if we can get around that some way through education, and I think community building, building relationships is imperative. So you have to find out where they go hang out. I'm not hanging out anywhere yet. I'm still working. But I think if you could find out where they go, where they collectively go, and make your presence known there, and let them know you're not a threat, but really a safety net, I think that would be very important. So thank you for a job well done. I hope I don't have to call you at all. I have grab bars. Thanks a lot, guys.
Councilwoman Bullock?
Thanks, Madam, pardon me. Thanks, Madam Chair. Mayor, first of all, thank you for hosting the administration tonight, and for sponsoring this program, and Healthy Lakewood Foundation's here, key funder, key partner. Fire Department, thanks for being here, and Community Paramedic Ryan for being here as well. So a couple rapid-fire questions, just to clarify some mechanics of this, and then some bigger-picture questions. So first, the, let's see here. So how is the duty cycle for your position handled? I know most of our EMS are cross-trained, it's part of a management philosophy, and have dual duty. Is that the case for your position, or are you 100% focused on the paramedic work? So big- So big, big three alarm fire, you could, you could, okay, very good. Second, I'm, I think Councilman Baker mentioned this too. I'm glad to hear there's three assistant community paramedics. So that's an expansion. That's new news as far as I'm aware. So that's a good thing. Are we providing that capacity from our regular workforce? Is there more grant funding or how's that structured?
Yeah. So the three assistants, so Ryan is a 40-hour employee. He came off shift. He's in the administration now. So he's Monday through Friday at normal admin hours. The three assistants that are helping him are actually still shift members. They, on their shift days can function in the capacity of doing some of the intake stuff and processing some of the data work that comes in. But off duty, they'll go out with Ryan and they shadowed him to learn the process. And Ryan can speak to that part better. But those are actual shift members who, when we put out interest for the program, they volunteered to do that, you know, to be his assistant, to go out and learn. And they have a, an interest in what they can provide to, to help the program expand or to help the program be successful.
So, and this gets into the previous question. So are all of members of the fire department could equally be on EMS versus, you know, driving a ladder truck? Or are some more likely to serve on EMS? And those ladder group were the ones that you solicited? Hey, who would like to do the neighborhood paramedic program and shadow Ryan?
Yeah. So we put it out, so to kind of answer completely, we do still have one LPA member, Lakewood Paramedic Association, that came from the merger back in 99. That's Scott Russell. He's a paramedic supervisor on B shift. Scott is not cross-trained, so Scott will respond with normal crews to fires, but Scott does not go into fires. He's not a firefighter.
Understood.
Everybody else on the department is, is a cross-trained firefighter. We still have a few, how many do you know off the top here?
Four.
Four, four that are, one in the back of the room, that is firefighter only from pre-merger days. Everybody else is cross-trained medically.
So any cross-trained?
Yeah.
Firefighter.
Officer, firefighter.
Firefighter.
Could do anything at any time. And do you on purpose kind of rotate people around to make sure the experience is?
Sure.
Equally distributed?
Okay, that's, so, so then with the three assistant paramedics expansion, we now have 24/7 coverage? Or, well, probably not, but, you know, closer to 24/7?
Yeah. So the idea of getting the, and I mean, I apologize.
Go ahead, yeah.
So the idea to get the assistants was that Ryan is allowed to have, utilize his vacation time. Ryan is allowed to utilize his sick time.
Have a personal life.
Exactly. He's allowed to be off. And in those instances, we saw that the program was, it was too much of a lag. If Ryan goes out of the country for two weeks, we couldn't have the neighborhood paramedic program just stop. So we had to have somebody following up and doing the visits and continuing with the intake. So that was the, the idea or the birth of the, no, no pun intended, of the assistants. And we put that out to the department and we chose three members that were interested in helping out. And Ryan has.
So Ryan, you're still doing the primary duties, but when you're off shift or on personal leave for any number of reasons, there's still intake and some capacity, right?
Yeah. So really, the focus was getting them brought up to speed on especially how they can help me with some of those ancillary activities that might not necessarily be driving some of that change. But I was getting requests up to 10 to 15 blood pressure clinics a month to come out and hang out and do that, which is awesome. I love it. I love going out. I love talking with everybody. The problem is, is that would take up a lot of my time and I wouldn't be getting any results. So things like that, we thought it would be a great opportunity for them to start to build their way into the community, start to gain some trust. And then as we start to develop those relationships, even with them one-on-one with other individuals, then we can maybe start seeing them get certified and get out into the homes as well and do some of those assessments, make recommendations. That way, we're kind of always rolling through people. Nobody's sitting on the burner for too long. We're able to make recommendations quickly and efficiently to provide the resident with a safer experience in their home because the longer that delay happens, the more of a chance of them coming into a risk would be. So we really want to try to stay on top of that. So that was the idea behind bringing them in, especially when I'm not around. We want to make sure that, that people are able to still reach out and have contact with somebody.
Super. A couple quick more things. So the sandwich generation services, for example, that you mentioned, those are not just, are they when, in response to a call, like after a fall? Or is that something that you're doing some proactive work on?
So we're always trying to be proactive with our program. So we're trying to share the, the program with those individuals. It's really hard because where you might go to a senior center or the Westerly buildings, they're all there, right there. They can see you. They're in and out of the building. So it's a little bit easier to make contact with individuals in that setting where it's hard unless you just got out of the car and went knocking door to door to identify those individuals in single-family homes or maybe, you know, duplex or whatnot. So taking the time with the, especially with the assistants and they're going on these calls in real time and they're seeing it, they're advocating for the program. And when we go on calls, it's often that you end up, ending up in a home, there for a child or maybe the parent, and there's a hospital bed in the dining room because that's where their parents at, or their uncle, whoever it may be. And you realize quickly that this home is in chaos, probably all the time. And it's, it's disheartening, but it's hopeful because you have an opportunity to help somebody right then and start to share the different resources. And it happens a lot. It's, it's not all the time, but it's more than I would have ever expected to see hospital beds set up in somebody's living room or dining room. It wasn't an experience I had growing up. So starting here, it was kind of an eye-opener that this is how people live often and every day. So taking the time with them to find, you know, how we can help them, utilizing the schools who more than likely have a knowledge that this is taking place in the home. So trying to partner better with the schools and getting an idea of what they're seeing and how we can help, you know, the counselors in the schools and how we can balance that work-life balance.
So it seems like acute intervention often is not, is going to be a response. You also have a second track where you're doing proactive education.
Yes.
Last question from me. Police Chief Fisher said, "Public education is public safety." Would you say public education is healthcare or is first responder services?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks. I'm glad we deferred the other thing. But it's great. This is so much wonderful information. You guys are doing such great work. I do have quite a few questions. I think some of them I'll have with you over coffee sometimes, so I don't hold everybody up. But I did want to circle back, just kind of following Councilman Baker's question. Just, there's so many paths, it seems like, so many avenues to go down. You're doing so much already. And just, once you start down this road, you just keep identifying need and opportunity, right? So I'm interested, I'll be interested to see, as you work with chat, and I'm sorry that I'm coming off of that as you're coming on, because I would have liked to have those conversations. But I think that will provide you some opportunity to, to see how, like, how the bigger picture strategy could work and, you know, probably can put a bug in the ear of Healthy Lakewood Foundation for some strategic planning grants or some other funding sources for that too, to, to look at this. Because I could see, you know, certainly there's avenues for mental health. I could think, you know, there's certainly connections with non-seniors, with disabilities and mobility issues, legal assistance. If a lot of these folks are living in rental homes, if they're not getting, you know, what they need in terms of adapting. So there's just, there's a lot that could happen there. I did want to check in a couple things. Are you, one of the referrals, I didn't notice on the checklist, have you worked with, when folks need like referrals for ADA, to our ADA coordinator if they're looking for resources or if they have those sort of adaptive service issues? Is there any connectivity there? Sure. Yeah. I'm thinking of, because you mentioned Kirtland House. I know, I spoke to some folks there, talking with vision impairment about, this would be more in terms of the public side. So I guess it's outside of the home, but related in terms of being able to cross the street safely. So we have adaptive crosswalks and things like that. So. And then you mentioned Cleveland Clinic. Do you have contacts also with UH or Metro or are most of our folks getting transported to Cleveland Clinic? Right. I was thinking more, like, when we were talking about working with the social workers, that if someone were not transported, but they're coming out of the hospital, like, maybe they were, they were transported by family or whatever. So we're not necessarily, you don't necessarily know that they went, right? So.
No, so that, to that, that's part of the conversations we've had with the social workers, specifically at the clinic. When we had a discussion, it really came about because I walked into the hospital, we had a patient, I wasn't able to make contact with her at the time. So I said, you know what? Let me go up here and see if we can make a contact because I didn't want her coming back home. She was, her home was not in good, good condition for her return. So I just went back, had a conversation and it opened up that door. And as with a lot of the conversations I have, people responses, I didn't know the city provided a service like this. This is great. So as we start to build that in, and I've gotten on their monthly meeting, it's going to trickle up from the emergency rooms where we really tried to focus to the other levels to where once those social workers on the different floors have an understanding of our program and it becomes more widespread within the hospital, hopefully they'll be able to reach out to us and say, hey, I'm here with one of your residents. And now we can coordinate the discharge or connecting them to the different resources if need be.
Great.
We do still meet monthly with the team from UH too, that helped us with the, kind of the start of this program. So they're helpful in trying to get us the resources to get into that avenue so that there can be, regardless of the, the hospital system. Because we, majority of the patients get transported to the Cleveland Clinic, but we do have Metro patients, we do have UH patients. I mean, so there are a number of the hospital utilizers from the different systems. And we want to make sure that we're providing the service to everybody, regardless of where they prefer to get their care from. So we do continue to work with them monthly. Ryan and I meet with them every, the first Thursday of every month. So we'll make sure we try and continue on that track.
Awesome. Thanks. And then I noticed you had in one of the slides, it mentioned about trying to do some informational videos and, and posts on your social media. And, you know, I love your social media. I'm always sharing all that stuff. But are you working with our new public information officer on that? Or how are you, what's your? Awesome. Yeah. Because the Councilman Bullock's point about, when Chief Fisher said that about the public education is sort of that same, you know, that getting that information out there. I know you guys are working hard to do that. So I'm excited to have it. All right. Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much. We appreciate you. Before I forget, I want to move to approve the minutes of, last meeting, of January 8th. So also move?
Second.
Motion's are made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. And with nothing else, we are adjourned. Thank you.